Hi folks, good evening and welcome to Focus Springfield. Tonight, we're going to be having a debate between the two finalists for the Ward Five City Council race here in Springfield. Let me introduce you to the candidates, Edward Collins and LeVar Click-Brews. We're going to have questions not only from me, my name is Mike Dobbs, I'm the Executive Editor from Reminder Publishing, but also from Paul Tuthill of WAMC Radio and Matt Sefransky from Western Mass Politics and Insight. Let me just go over a little housekeeping activity so you understand what's going to be happening in terms of the format of tonight's debate. Each of the candidates is going to be given an opportunity to speak about their candidacy and why they want to be the next City Councilor for Ward Five. That's going to be followed by some questions from the media. I'll be asking two questions. Paul will ask two questions and Matt will ask two questions. After that, we're going to go into a Lincoln-Douglas style part of the debate, which simply means each candidate is going to get to ask a question to the other candidate. And it will be a series of three questions. Each candidate will then have a closing period of one minute, just to sum up his candidacy and to appeal to your vote. Now, just as a reminder, the Elections Office here in the city of Springfield is noting that Saturday is the last day to register to vote for this Ward Five special election, and they will be open on Saturday. The election itself will be September 13th. So, moving ahead with this, let's first go to Ed Collins for an opening statement, followed by LeVar Click-Brews. Ed?
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, everyone that's watching this evening. Thank you for tuning in, and thank you to Focus Springfield for presenting this forum for the voters of Ward Five. It's an important public service. My name's Ed Collins. I'm a lifelong city resident. For the last 51 years, I've lived in Ward Five. Been a homeowner there since three months after my wife and I had our son. We bought a house there, and we've loved the 16 Acres neighborhood ever since. I grew up here, as I said. Other than two years in the United States Navy, I've always lived in Springfield. After my service, which began right after high school, I came to work for a local company here, and a few years later, went to work for an international union, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, for the rest of my working career. Presently, I work as a volunteer mentor at the Veterans Treatment Court, which is operated out of the North Hoyop District Court, helping veterans that are on probation, you know, keep up with the terms of their probation and stay out of trouble. I've spent a good deal of my adult life outside of work volunteering and community service. I've worked in a number of service agencies, Child and Family Service, Goodwill Industries, United Way of Western Mass, and others over the years. And I spent 15 years as a trustee, first five of them at Westfield State College, and five with the University of Massachusetts as a volunteer trustee. So, running for public office in Ward Five is just an extension of the kind of public service I've done all my life, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you very much. LeVar?
Good evening. Hi, my name is LeVar Click-Brews. I was fortunate to finish first in the August primary election for Ward Five for City Councilor. I want to thank the residents of Ward Five for their support. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Collins, and also thank you for your service. I believe I'm the right choice for the residents of Ward Five. I have the professional experience, working as City Council aide, and currently a member of Mayor Sarno's staff. I also have direct experience on the duties and responsibilities of a City Councilor. In the interest of transparency, when I announced running for public office, in my house, my wife has the final say. She definitely runs the show. I'm also very proud of my community involvement, especially the gift I have coaching my alma mater, the High School of Commerce. And I love working with those young men. Bring me joy each and every day. That's the reason why I do the work that I do, to give young men like them hope and a place where they can dream big. And I make it clear to them that whatever you do, do it with integrity, do it with passion, and do it with love. And that's why I decided to run for City Council. I'm a proud husband for 20 years, the love of my life, Renee Click, who I met at the High School of Commerce. I have five beautiful children, who we raised in the city of Springfield and went to public schools. So, that's why I'm committed to not only Ward Five, but the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, I'm going to start off with my two questions, and I'm going to try to alternate who goes first, who goes second. So, LeVar, I'm going to give you the first answer, have you give the first answer to this question. Ward Five has one of the most, largest nonprofit organizations within its borders, and we're talking about Western New England University. The relationship between a nonprofit and a city government can sometimes be contentious, sometimes can be quite collaborative. So, I'm wondering, as residents of Ward Five, do you think that that relationship is good, could be improved? And if you're elected to the council and representing Ward Five, what steps would you take to either maintain a good relationship or try to improve the relationship?
Yeah, I think everything can be always improved. So, one of the things I know I can work on directly, and speaking candidly from my perspective, and not meeting with anyone at the college, what I would like to bring more collaborative efforts to our community, working with the Sheriff's Department, working with the Police Department, and bringing, and having them adopt the community, whether it's bringing a music program and/or bringing sports and recreational activities, or just coming to have their students volunteer their times at our local community centers. So, I would bring that collaborative effort with my Dunbar Community Center background, my YMCA background, and making sure not only our young people will benefit from this, but I believe in families will benefit from that. And when you're talking about families, you're talking about our elderly, our young people, and also dads and moms. And we all know, single-parent homes is prevalent in Ward Five and throughout the city. So, they need support. And I believe our colleges, specifically Western New England University, which is in Ward Five, definitely should come up, step up to the forefront and be more visible in our communities. And as the Ward Five City Councilor, I will make sure I meet with them on day one and schedule a meeting, so that way we can get some things in order and have some ass from them that we can bring back to the residents of Ward Five.
Thank you, sir. Ed?
Yes, great question, Mike. And during our campaigning and interaction with voters, I actually heard from a number of voters on some of the streets, Brewster Street really springs to mind, but there were others as well, who have had complaints about homes in that neighborhood, single-family homes, having been bought up by absentee landlords and rented out to students from Western New England, and sometimes probably overcrowding more people living in a single-family house that are not related than ought to be allowed, or in fact, may even be the case under existing ordinances, which I'm not sure about, but can easily check into, and noise complaints. And so, you know, Western New England University is a good neighbor, but there are always going to be issues that need to be addressed. I think I'm in a good position to do that, because the President, Robert Johnson, and I have a relationship from some of my past experience. He was a chancellor at the University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth during my time as a trustee of UMass, and we worked together on a number of issues, including search committees to find new chancellors. So, I would make every effort to work with him to address those legitimate concerns of citizens.
Thank you. Okay, Ed, we're going to give you the first take on this question. On September 8th, we're going to have Councilors Tracy Whitfield and Justin Hurst meeting on the steps of City Hall with a number of area businesspeople, discussing their concerns about how the city has been allocating and distributing ARPA money. So, I am wondering, would you be joining them in this, would you be joining them at that press conference in terms of questioning what the current status of ARPA allocation is, and whether or not the money is getting to the people who really need it?
I was not aware of that. I certainly understand the issue that they've raised. I mentioned it in our previous debate here. I'm very sensitive to the issues that Councilor Whitfield initially raised about large institutions getting the majority of the ARPA funds and individuals, not necessarily being rejected, but not even getting answers for some period of time, months and months and months, about the status of their request for some ARPA money. I would be happy. I wasn't invited to join or be part of that. The 8th is Election Day, correct? If I remember right, for the primary election. So, I will probably be around for a while, but I know I have a commitment in Boston late in the day. So, depending upon the time of that, if invited by whoever's putting it on, I would go, because I share some of those concerns.
Okay, LeVar?
Thanks. Well, the ARPA is a touchy subject for our community. Don't get me wrong, I think things could definitely be better as improvements, but when we talk about the Commonwealth of Mass, and Springfield Mass in particular, we're the only city who's actually dished out money to the businesses and to our most effective community, our constituents in the city of Springfield. No other city in the Commonwealth has done that. We also recognize that the state, who's sitting on billions of dollars, have not assisted and given some relief to our residents here in the city of Springfield. With all that being said, I'm on the front line, taking phone calls, most likely daily, from my residents, so I feel for their concerns. We're trying our best to get those questions answered in a timely fashion. I'm doing constituent services, that's my strength, making sure they're heard, their pain, their pain that they're feeling, I feel for them, I have empathy for them. So, I won't be joining, obviously, but I do feel the need for Councilor Whitfield and Hurst to make their comments on that, because I believe whatever you feel, you should make some noise about that. Again, I stand with the mayor and administration as far as what we've done for our city and providing relief to our residents in the city of Springfield.
Thank you very much, sir, for your answer. Okay, I'm going to ask Paul Tuthill to come up with his two questions, and Paul?
Thanks very much, Mike. Gentlemen, good evening. Ward Two City Councilor Mike Fenton has proposed an ordinance that's been in committee now, I want to say, for about a year, while the fine details of it are being worked out, that would allow residents to petition the city to put speed bumps on their streets. What do you think of that concept, that idea? I think, LeVar, I think you get this question first, right?
Yeah. Paul, thanks for the question. From a safety point, I don't think a speed bump would be ideal for the city of Springfield. I understand the point behind that and slowing down traffic, but I believe there's other ways we need to look at. And I would have to look at the ordinance for myself to make an informed decision on that, but on the face, what was being presented to me right now, speed bumps, yes, I don't believe in putting those in our roads. I believe in signage, traffic lights, whatever, flashing lights, whatever that may be, that will be my take on that. However, I'm willing to look at the ordinance that Councilor Fenton is proposing and make my decision once I see it in front of me.
Thank you. Ed?
I'm a bit of a skeptic about speed bumps as well. I wouldn't come out and say I'm against them, but I think there are probably other measures that can be, at least as, if not more, effective in dealing with is a real problem of speeding and other forms of reckless driving, frankly, that happened in Springfield and in 16 Acres in particular on Parker Street. I can remember when State Representative Paul Karen was successful in getting all those traffic lights added. It used to be even worse on Parker Street than it is now. Speed bumps, you know, I can be convinced, but I'm not yet convinced, that they don't present a problem for snow plowing, which is already a bit of an issue in Springfield, not so much on main arteries like Parker Street, but on some of the other side streets. I'm willing to consider anything. I certainly think that our police department's Traffic Bureau is not staffed to a point that they can do what kind of a job we'd like to see them do, and I'm sure they would like to do themselves, to try to control speeding and other forms of unsafe driving in Springfield. Again, I wouldn't rule out a speed bump, but I don't think it ought to be the first measure that we would look to.
Thank you. My final question is, is there an ordinance or a resolution that you are considering introducing if you are elected to the City Council? Ed?
Me first? Yeah, I think the first one would be, and I don't have it fully framed in my mind as to how it might read, but I feel very strongly that we need to do a better job and get off the caboose in being the last place in the state of Massachusetts, in terms of how poorly we are living up to our legal obligation to fund our municipal pensions. We have the highest unfunded pension liability for the public employees of any community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, that might be one of the first things I would look at. Another might be what I've talked about before, about a way to make sure we never have another repeat of a situation where the City Council is legally impotent from making sure one of its legally passed ordinances is actually implemented and enforced. Those two things, I think, would be among my first two.
Thank you. LeVar?
Yeah, I would propose just bringing C-3 policing to 16 Acres, and work with them, bring in ordinance where they've seen in different areas of the city, and working with them, making sure our residents are safe. So, I would focus working with C-3 policing and focus on public safety. That's what I would look to bring. I don't have anything specific, but I would look to talk to our residents and bring in ordinance that focuses on public safety.
Thank you both.
Okay, so, next up is going to be Matt Sefransky with two questions for our candidates. Matt?
Good evening, candidates. Last time we were all here, I had asked a question about, specifically about enforcing certain ordinances, I believe Ed just made a reference to that a moment ago, and I was talking about the Police Commission back then, and I was curious, if either of you had been, had the opportunity, would you have voted to reestablish the Police Commission, even if it necessarily required a veto? And more importantly, what changes or alterations to the Police Commission ordinance would you be interested in considering if you were elected to the council? And I believe we're going to, Ed first for that?
I think I would. We haven't had enough experience with how the ordinance is working for me to have come up with any ideas of changes that I might suggest, but I think it's pretty clear that a civilian police commission is called for in Springfield. And my main objection, though, to what happened around that had less to do with support of a police commission, because it could have been any other issue, it could be any other chief executive officer. I just want to make sure that there's no such thing as, there's a veto, which he's entitled to do, you know, council passes an ordinance, mayor vetoes it, enough votes are there to override the veto, but there shouldn't be a veto by administrative fiat that makes a dictator out of a chief executive officer. That should never be allowed to happen again. That's my real issue there. But I would vote to, if we have to reestablish it as a result of some further court decision, yeah, I'd vote for it.
Thank you. LeVar, same question?
Yeah, can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. So, we have the Police Commission is there now. Would you have voted for it, including voting to override a veto if necessary? And what changes or alterations have you considered, or do you think would be necessary to the ordinance now that it has been implemented?
Yeah, I definitely would have voted for it. I believe in a system where you have more than one voice to make decisions on the greater good for the community. As far as implementing any new ordinances, I mean, excuse me, any resolutions, I wouldn't. I would have to get more information in reference to that, but as far as the Police Commission as implemented, I definitely would have voted in favor of it.
Thank you. My second question, both of you are certainly not new to politics, government, elections. You've been through many elections before, and now you've both been through a special election before. Given your experience in this special election, what do you think that the city could do better for future special elections? What could it do better for elections in general, given this experience of a midsummer special election? And we'll start with LeVar this time.
Well, I just truly believe, I think we need to do a better job of sending mail, direct mail to our residents, just informing them about an election, any election. I truly believe that. I know, I'm going to talk about budgeted things, and it may cost a lot of money, but I think it's necessary that we try to inform them as much as possible. Also, we can run free campaigns on social media, YouTube commercials, promoting all of our elections, not only a special election, but especially if we have this time again where there's a special election that may come forth, because it was very difficult when we go into our residents' homes, they didn't even realize that Marcus had resigned his position. They didn't even know a special election was even coming forth. So, that was kind of discouraging, but also it fueled me even more to get out and make sure I knocked on as many doors as possible. But yes, I do believe we can do more, and I would be in favor of just sending out direct mails and just informing our residents and keeping them up to date of what's going on, because I think that goes a long way.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, we were, you know, prisoners of the way the special election home rule petition was worded, and that it called for the triggering event to be when the council accepted the resignation of Marcus, and it was a window of time beyond that when they had to hold the preliminary, followed 28 days later by the general election, which ended up giving us a general election one week after the statewide election, which people will have voter fatigue if they're not completely confused by the process. So, I guess I would suggest that we, and it will take legislative approval, because it's a legislative enactment that created this, I think there ought to be a little more flexibility on the timing of the election. It would have been much better if the general election in the special was held on the same day, on September 8th, I guess it is, September 8th, instead of having people, trying to get people to come back one week later. And I think the language could be modified to meet a circumstance like that.
Thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen, we're going to be doing our Lincoln Douglas section here. So, we're going to have three questions. Each of you are going to get three opportunities to talk about what the other candidate wants to hear from you. So, I'm trying to keep track, who answered first, last. LeVar, you had the, okay, so, I'm going to give the first question to Ed, and then, LeVar, you will have the first question, the first question of the second group here. So, Ed, you can ask LeVar a question.
Okay, thank you, Mike. LeVar, would you join me in seeking a answer to the issue we just talked about a few moments ago, where a chief executive officer, whoever that may be in the future, a mayor in the future, simply does not implement a legally passed ordinance of the City Council? If you're elected, or even if you're not, because even if I'm not elected, I'm going to try to seek some sort of a resolution to prevent a circumstance like that from occurring again, where had it not been for a out-of-town law firm coming forth to represent the City Council pro bono, we would have been just jammed up, and that should never occur again. Will you join me in trying to seek a solution to that?
Yeah, I would, can't say if I would join you, but I would definitely look at your resolution that you're presenting on the table, and make an informed decision once I have all the resolution facts in front of me. So, yes, I would definitely take a look at it.
Okay. All right, so, LeVar, you get to ask Ed a question.
Sure. Ed, Ward Five is one of the most diverse neighborhoods in the city. Can you give me, or give us some examples of issues and events you've been involved in in Ward Five?
Yeah, sure. I mean, Ward Five specifically, you know, is a neighborhood, as you point out, that represents most of 16 Acres, and over the years, both my wife and I have been active in the Civic Association there, not so much in the last few years, since our son has moved out, and we've been involved in children's sports when my son was younger, at Greenleaf and at St. Catherine's. You know, the neighborhood includes major parts of Pine Point and a little bit of the Upper Hill, and all of the work that I've done in the various community services organizations that I volunteered with over the years, served families in all of those neighborhoods. So, we're deeply rooted in Ward Five, have been there most of our adult lives, and always been active in the community in a variety of ways.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, Ed, you ask another question of LeVar.
LeVar, we've talked about this both in the first debate, and you referenced it a little bit in this one, about policing in Ward Five in particular, and I don't know if it came up the last time, I don't recall, but it's pretty well understood, that there is one patrol, police patrol car with one officer, basically covering that entire area most of the time. That's inadequate. You yourself mentioned in the last debate, an incident that you had with theft of stuff from cars in your driveway, and we were the victims of a house break ourselves a number of years ago, where my wife went to the store for 20 minutes, and by the time she came back, there was, they had forced the slider door open and come in and robbed some, everything that was on the dressers, you know, the jewelry boxes and things like that, including my grandmother's gold lady's watch that they used to have, that was given to her for her 21st birthday, which the money is nothing, it was the sentimental value of that. One officer in one patrol car is nowhere near enough to cover an area the size of 16 Acres and a good part of Pine Point and the orchard as well. So, I think we need to do more than, you know, C-3. I think we need true community policing in our half of the city, and I wonder if you would tell me what you're prepared to do to try to make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely speak with Superintendent Clapperot to see where we can implement C-3 community policing in 16 Acres. in the 16 Acres neighborhood. I will agree with you. One patrol car policing that whole neighborhood is inadequate. But we do know the pandemic has hit. Police officers are down. But again, I will agree with you. One officer patrolling that neighborhood is totally unacceptable. So I would definitely work with police superintendent to get some solutions, because that's something that I really want to hone in on day one, if elected, to make sure our residents are safe. Public safety is near and dear to my heart. That's something that I truly believe in, because if our residents don't feel safe, then really nothing else really matters. I want to make sure they're safe in their homes, not only their homes, when they go out to the stores, and when our kids go to school and parents go to work. They want to make sure when they come back to their place of residence that everything is where they left it. So I would advocate hard on day one for C-3 community policing in the neighborhood to make sure we get more patrolling in those neighborhoods.
All right, gentlemen. Due to the immense power that Steve Carey has given me as moderator, I realize that I want to make this even in terms of this part of the debate. So, LeVar, you get another chance to ask Ed a question. That way, each of you have gone twice. So, LeVar, do you have a final question for Ed here?
Yes, final question, Mr. Collins. Public safety, which we talked about, is my top priority. And I stated this, my force order of business, if elected. What is your top priority for Ward 5, if elected?
Well, I think there are the things I've already mentioned. And I would add to that the T-word, taxes. And I'm not so much talking about the increase in property taxes as the fact that Springfield is like so many other post-industrial cities in the Northeast, where the burden of the property taxes shifted, which was once carried mostly from industry that is no longer here, onto homeowners. And what's taken its place in the footprint, just go into the North End at some point and look at Bay State Health Centers taking over almost all of that Wasn't Avenue area that was all heavy industry that paid high taxes. And it's now occupied by tax-exempt organizations. And that's a problem. And between medical facilities and some of our colleges and universities and other tax-exempt organizations, we have to do more to try to persuade them to do a better job. Some don't pay any in lieu of tax payments, others pay something. But they all get service from the city. And, you know, trying to find a way to ease the burden on the homeowners in light of the fact that there is so much property now that is occupied by nonprofit, tax-exempt organizations, I think would be a pretty high priority for me.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your answers. Okay, so as we determined by a coin toss, we're now at the point where you're going to be able to sum up your candidacy and sum up your message to the voters. So, LeVar, you go first in signing off here.
I just first want to thank Focus Springfield for having this debate. Mike Dobbs, thank you for moderating. To our panels, thank you. Listen, I'm family-oriented. I love the city of Springfield. My livelihood is here. I'm dedicated, I'm committed, and I'm ready to serve. I thank you for even believing in me, the voters that voted for me. I truly thank you from the depths of my heart. Now, on day one, if elected, I'm going to focus on C-3 policing, which we already mentioned. However, I'm a basketball coach, a mentor, so I also want to focus on youth development, making sure our youth are serviced and making sure the 16 Acres neighborhood is representative throughout the city. And I will work with the community centers to bring youth sports back to the Claudio Concepcion Center, Greenleaf, and making sure that facility is utilized. And lastly, I'll make sure our seniors are taken care of. And that could mean an array of things. But I want to make sure they have lived here, through the city of Springfield, gave their life, worked. They deserve more. So I'll make sure, again, public safety is number one. I will work hard for you, the constituents of the city in Springfield, particularly Ward 5. I will work hard for you. You have my word. And I'm asking you to vote for me, LeVar Click Bruce, on September 13th. It will mean the world to me. And I thank you, thank you in advance. God bless.
Ed?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you to Focus Springfield. Thank you to everyone who's watching tonight. Thank you to LeVar for being a worthy opponent and running a high-road race in this race. And it was, you know, I appreciated that very much about LeVar. And I want to thank everyone who voted for me in the preliminary election and who hopefully will come out and vote again for me, as well as those of you who voted for another candidate. I ask for your vote. I want to wish LeVar luck. Not quite as much luck as I wish for myself, but I want to wish him luck at any rate and everything. And I just want to sum up by saying that, you know, I'm a lifelong resident of Springfield and deeply rooted for 51 years in 16 Acres. I love my community. I've tried hard to always be of service to my community. The one thing you know about me is that this is not going to be a career move where I'm running to pave the way to run for higher office. This is the capstone on a career of public service and as a volunteer that I've done all my life. I think I have more of a contribution to make. That's the only reason that I'm running. Again, I ask for your vote. And thank you to everybody for making tonight's debate possible.
Thank you again, gentlemen. So ladies and gentlemen, just a reminder that if you're not registered to vote in this election, Saturday is the last day to register, and that the city election office is going to be open on Saturday, so you can participate. And this special election is September 13th. So I hope all of you understand the importance of selecting your next city councillor and go out on the September 13th and vote. Thanks very much, and thank you, for all of you, for watching.